Ready?
Yes.
Marsh?
No.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Stop, Mike?
Yes.
What's your?
Yes. The ordinance passed.
Uh, 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 none of that. Okay. Let's be orderly. Okay. Moving along to new business.
Oh, uh.
I thought it was Christmas time.
Talk with him. I've got this. I've learned a little bit. You're kind of on his council. I don't just go into sitting and listen. So here's my list of all.
Say what now?
Well, we don't want to make any decisions until you get back.
Um. Increase the number of lease cards we buy so that we can start to have enough lease cards that our tenants can take them home because that will last longer.
Okay. Okay. Let's move along to new business. Number one under new business, resolution to clarify and extend the timeframe to solicit proposals for development of the West Avenue parking lot and to consider parking neutral proposals for sale of smaller parcels on southern, on the southern end. May I believe this is yours?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the council considering this item tonight and for the community taking the time to hear it and weigh in on it. This is a two-part resolution. The resolution itself is pretty simple. The first part is to formally delay a request for proposals process until we've completed the entire parking study. And the reason for that is even if we were to move forward with this proposal tonight and sell the small portion of land on the southern lot, there would still be two acres that remain on the site, which is the size of a normal city block. So there would still be quite the opportunity left. And I think that over the next year, when the full results of the parking and parking study and transportation plan come in, we have a lot of information to consider whenever we look at the full development of the lot, whether or not we keep a part as open space or do other things with it. The second part is to formally offer a small portion of the southern end for sale. It's a little bit more than a third of an acre. The idea is that we would list the property for sale following the directions of our land sale ordinance, and we'd follow that to the letter. And then whenever we got responses back, we judge them according to the offer value, how they met the master plan, whether or not they were parking neutral, and whether or not they had an enforceable timeline and architectural standards. I'm bringing this.
Hang on. Y'all, let's shut the phones off, all right? Put them on silent, put them in your pocket, put them in your car. Everybody, we don't need to have cell phones on, all right? Go ahead, Matthew.
Thank you. The proposal, which I'll call, I guess, the Rindell Sharp proposal, the owner is Brian Rindell and the architect is Robert Sharp. For me, whenever I saw it and I've seen most of the concepts for this lot over the past six months or so, was just too compelling to leave on the table. And I thought it was of a small enough size that it was safe for us to consider. It leaves, as I said earlier, the equivalent of an entire city block available for consideration in the future, so it's kind of a slow walk consideration of the site. It's combined, and I think this is a very key piece, it's combined with property abutting the Spring Street extension, which is owned privately. So what's being proposed could not be accomplished by a different owner, which is one of the reasons I think is, again, worth considering in advance. And also, I think it's clear that it advances a specific recommendation of our downtown master plan, which was adopted 12 years ago in 2004. And I don't mean to say that this is a part, this is a building that was sketched in and watercolored on a map. I mean, this is a specific recommendation called for in the plan to complete both sides of the Spring Street extension. Going back to that master plan, that was back in 2004. Since then, there have been a couple of relevant actions that the council has taken or the city has taken in that 12-year period. Notably, this went out for RFP for the entire lot, I think in 2007 or 2008, and a selection was actually made. The development agreement didn't pass our legal review, and also the recession kicked in, and so the negotiations were never completed. More recently, the council has voted to open up RFPs on this land. I think there's some confusion about that issue, which I'd like to clear up later. And we also voted, of course, to fund a parking study out of our reserves at about $94,000 at the request of the Walton Art Center and the Dixon Street Merchants Association. And we developed that scope according to their requests line by line. That brings me to maybe the history of this, of this, the more recent history. Back about four or five months ago, Rob Sharp asked me to facilitate some meetings with downtown stakeholders. So we met with representatives of the Dixon Street Merchants Association, we met with the executive leadership at the Walton Art Center. We showed them this proposal, we had a series of meetings. They also had a proposal because they were worried about some of the full development concepts that they had seen coming from others in the community. I think they had some very legitimate concerns, and their concept was actually a great, a great argument for slow walking this. I just want to pass this out to the council. I'm sorry, you have to share copies, there's two in that direction and two in this direction. And what you'll see here is, you know, on the front page, this is kind of the memo, and this outlines some very good things. Preserve space to meet programmatic needs for festivals, add some more green spaces. They highlight that there's a safety issue for the trail, which I think is very important for us to consider. They also, whenever they draw this out, you'll see on the second page is the existing lot, there are 287 spaces, and you'll see the concept on the third page. Now, when I say this was a good start and is a good concept for kind of delaying the conversation, I want to emphasize that that is really what it was, is a good start with good concepts. And Rob actually took some of these ideas as a base and has incorporated into the proposal that you're going to see today. And I think next, might be a good idea for us to get to that. But first, I want to highlight that for the first time in this conversation, everybody is in the same room. We had those meetings four or five months ago, but since this proposal has come about, it's been very difficult to have a conversation about the facts of this matter because I think that this lot is so important to the community, and that makes a lot of sense. It's a vital part of what we do, and it's rational for us to be cautious about it. And I want to be cautious about it, too, but I don't want to delay unnecessarily. And so I think it's timely for us to consider this for the reasons I've already outlined. I'm worried that there's a politics of allegiance at play, and what I want to do tonight is just get all the facts on the table. And, you know, at the end of the day, no matter how this goes, life is going to go on, and it's not really, it's not a cataclysmic decision one way or the other. But instead of a politics of allegiance, maybe we can approach this with a politics of the facts. With that introduction, Mayor, what I'd like to do is invite Rob Sharp to present the proposal, and then maybe I could, after he's done, I could talk about some of the recent decisions and why, in more detail, I'm bringing this forward.
Okay.
Thank you. I don't know how to advance the slides on the PowerPoint. Is there a controller? Are you the contact booth? Okay. Great. Thank you. My name's Rob Sharp. I'm an architect in Fayetteville, Arkansas. I'm here on behalf of Brian Rindell, who's the landowner that owns the land that's adjacent to the West Avenue parking lot. As Alderman Petty mentioned, the, there's a piece of land that's adjacent there. That interface between my client's land and the West Avenue lot has always been a little messy. It's a zigzag lot, there's a significant retaining wall. That is also where the multi-use trail becomes, instead of a trail, becomes something that's sharing a driving lane with parking lots. And when we first started working on this proposal, the first city staff member we met with was Matt Mahalvich, the trails coordinator, and he agreed this is probably the worst section of trail and what could be the most important part of the city, where the Razorback Greenway interfaces with Dixon Street, which is, we all agree, the most exciting street in Arkansas. And so this is a chance to really fix up this area, fix up that property line. And then if the city council decides to proceed with future projects, we have a cleaned-up square block to work with, or if they decide to proceed with a festival space or green space or a park or decided that they want things just the way they are, it's a place that we can create a full stop and we have a finished product. So if you could go to the next slide. I want to present just very briefly the, what I think are the compelling reasons to consider this proposal. First of all, that it is a way to fulfill the dream of the master plan. This is a seed that was planted 12 years ago, and enough time has gone by that I think it's time that Fayetteville make every effort to achieve this vision. As I mentioned before, it's a significant improvement in the experience of the multi-use trail. It squares up the property line at the, where the parcels interface. It's a significant financial return on the city's investment from the initial investment in the land. Not only will they get the purchase price, they'll also get all the normal development fees plus ongoing tax revenue. So it takes something that was basically, you know, off the tax rolls and puts it back on the tax rolls. It also adds a significant landmark building to the downtown area. The Walton Art Center's just done a magnificent job renovating their facility. Theater Squared is working on their plans. This is a chance for the private sector to come in with a companion project that's of equal value and quality. The, my client in this case, Brian Rindell, he's got an excellent record. He's a local developer, his office is in the Metro District Building, as it's been for the last 12 years. You know, he's someone that has the good of downtown Fayetteville and is hard, has a track record of excellent projects. So it's someone you can feel safe about in this instance. And the final thing is this is something that's parking neutral. I know a lot of discussion on this lot has been that we, no one wants to run the experiment of losing parking spaces in our entertainment district until we know more from the parking study. So I want to stress that this is a project that we can do that redistributes parking, but we don't lose any parking. So it's something that we should feel good about in that case. So this slide, this is the proposed site plan, and it's, south is down, the Nadine Baum Center in the Metro District Buildings at the bottom of the page. You see how the trail will cut through the building, and then there'll be a row of trees protecting it from the current parking lot and then get back on the trail. The next slide, this shows the parcel diagram that we're piecing together in order to take these remnant parcels and make a development proposal. As was mentioned previously, it's about a third of an acre in size. If you go in to see what it's like in real life, go down to Grubbs and stand about halfway in the middle, the middle of Grubbs and look due west, and everything on the left will be the development proposal, everything on the right will remain as it is. It gives you a real sense of the size of the parcel that we're talking about. And then the next slide. This is just a diagram that we show how the parking that would be displaced by moving the, by fixing the trail and selling off this piece could redistribute it along West Avenue. So in two and a half blocks, we can create all the parking that was there with no additional property by just moving a few curb lines and painting some stripes and pouring some sidewalks. This is the final site plan that we're looking at. This is with north to the right of the page, Dixon Street's on the right. Then you can see how this fits in and really completes Spring Street and also creates that opportunity for the Theater Squared parcel. This, these are our designs for the building. As we mentioned earlier, this is not just a quick sketch. This is something we worked at, all the floor plans and the elevator shafts and the structural system. And so this is a, is a proposal that's as far along as we could take it at this point in time, but it's not a, just a rough sketch. It's a fully developed proposal, and we feel that it's a scale that's appropriate for downtown at this time. This is another view of it. If you were hovering over Nadine Baum Center, that's what it would look like. We've been very specific in the proposal about the materials that we use. We'll be using brick and stone and pressed metal and sash windows and decorative ironwork. So this is something that you can feel confident about, that this is the type of building we'll bring forward. And our proposal is that the sale not happen until we have submitted a building permit, which means that all these issues will be down in black and white and reviewed by all the city entities. And so this is something that you have a chance to make sure you get what was promised to you. This is our vision of what could, this is Larama Street in Denver, and it's something that, this is what Spring Street could be like once there are significant buildings on both sides of the street. We could, since it's, the street is private at that section, we can have festivals there, we can string lights over it and have receptions or art shows or many activities. So the space between the buildings is as important as the buildings themselves. And then the final slide, this shows what the north side of the building would look like if you're standing on Dixon Street and looking at it. And this shows, you know, if Black Blues and Barbecue is going on or another event is going on, this would provide the backdrop for that facility, that festival. And I'd just like to conclude by saying it is a substantial project, but it is the best way the city can test out the waters for development, see how the process works. We'll have the next 12 to 14 months to work all these details out. And then you'll have a lot better information going forward with the RFP. You'll know what issues can come up, and it'll be a, an excellent chance to get a building going now rather than waiting for, you know, 15 months until the, until the process starts. And I'll be happy to answer any questions now or just go sit down and answer questions later.
Could we get questions after wrap up?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So I wanted to address a couple of the recent, you know, the recent votes and how there may be some confusion about that. But first, just to summarize, if we were to do something like this, we'd fix the trail. Before we're even negotiating, just the offer letter would pay back the reserves we used for the parking study more than three times. Property taxes from this project, when completed, would put more than $80,000 into our school district budget every year. There would be more than $110,000 to the city in parks, development, and impact fees. It's parking neutral, and the parking is redistributed to West Avenue where we have lanes that are the size of interstate lanes, and speeding is excessive, so there would be a traffic calming effect. And more than that, I think that the proposal is really the kind of thing that ends up on a postcard in, in the future. And the impact of that is hard to quantify, but I think it's something we need to be aware of. With regards to the prior vote, so, you know, there has been, what is in my opinion, some misinformation about the meaning of the resolution that we passed back on March 1. That was a resolution to open a RFP process for the site. And I wanted to clear this up because I hear from so many people, and this is something I'm working on every day in the meetings I have in my role as an alderman and in my role as a commissioner, the Advertising and Promotion Commission. I hear this all the time, that Fayetteville changes its mind too much to do business here. I hear it from bank presidents, I hear it from developers, I hear it from people that are the same ideology as me. And I think that it's a perception issue. I don't think it's actually true, but I think that I should clear up this misinformation because I think that if, as a council, we move forward with offering this small piece, a fraction of the lot for sale, that we're actually being very consistent with what we did on March 1. So I actually went back and I watched the tapes. It was not a deja vu experience I would recommend for most people. So on March 1, let's see, not many of us spoke on March 1 when we were considering this item. Jeremy did a fantastic introduction of the history, and then the council talked about things for, I don't know, 10 or 20 minutes in total, not very long at all. Alder Limiter, you asked about the stream on the site, and Alderman Kenyon, you spoke about that as well. Mayor Jordan, you clarified that you just wanted our input, and you also underscored the fact that you didn't want to lose parking spaces. Alderman Marsh, then you talked. You said a few things you characterized a lot. You also said, and this is what I'm getting at, you said that you were willing to break it into small, smaller parcels and considering doing this in an incremental fashion. Then I spoke. I said that we should look at the parking district as a whole before we consider the whole lot. I said that if we were to develop the lot, it would give us a means to do other improvements in the district that may make some of the existing assets we have, like the parking deck at the library, more useful. I also said that maintaining a portion of the site as open space for festivals is absolutely critical, and I want to reiterate that today. When I wrote a grant three years ago in the University of Arkansas Community Design Center study this site, we came to the same conclusion. And when we worked with the director at Black Blues and Barbecue, they told us that they needed about 50,000 square feet of space, and that's what we baked into the plans, and I'm still committed to that. I also said that I favored an incremental approach like Alderman, Alderman Marsh had mentioned. And I said that while we needed to wait for a parking study before we considered the entire site, that I knew that we would have interim results in the meantime that might let us take on something that was smaller in nature, something that was more of a test of what we might want to happen down there. And, you know, we are going to have those interim results at the beginning of July. We're going to have those before we vote on this project, which is one of the reasons, I think, introducing it now and giving people a time, the community time, to consider it while those results come in is a timely way to, to go about it. Alderman Long was the first person to speak after public comment. We had, we had two members of the public do public comment, and then Alderman Long said that he wanted to get the RFPs out so that we knew what our options are and could consider those things even in advance of the parking study. So I think we're being consistent with what we've done. Whenever we met on, at the next meeting on March 15, it was to actually fund the parking study, and there was no mention of this. We talked mostly about the transportation master plan. So I think that the record shows there's been council support for an incremental approach, and we've been clear that we were going to rely on interim results, which we want to do. So about that parking study, I have another handout. This is the piece, this is a description, this is from the Transportation Scope. Here's three that way, the rest this way. This is a description of what we'll have in hand in June. This is the, an analysis of existing and future demand. Basically, what this says is it looks at the amount of parking we need now, the amount of parking that we have available across the whole district, and the amount of parking we expect to need in the future depending on how downtown develops. It's the piece we need for, to consider anything happening on the West Avenue lot at all, and we're about to have it. What we won't have are the pieces that come next summer, the comprehensive pieces that are like, change these six words in the code to make your parking policies better. And I don't think we need that to consider something like this that is so relatively incremental. That full scope is so expansive, it really gets to everything, but we're going to have the critical pieces here in just a few weeks. So in terms of the land sale procedure, I've seen online, and a few people have called me asking if it's my intent that we just approve this today without considering anything else, and that's absolutely not the intent. I don't think that would be responsible. We have a land sale ordinance, first off, that we have to follow, so there's just a matter of the law. But, but second off, you know, if somebody comes in with a better offer at a higher price that makes more sense and advances the downtown master plan for us, then the city's better off to take that offer than the one we've been shown tonight. So I just think that's the best thing to do as a representative of the public. The other thing I want to talk about is the appraisal. So we did have this land appraised. I read every page of the appraisal. Here it is, it's been distributed in our packet. There's one thing I noticed whenever I read this, and it seems like the directive given to the appraiser, which he followed absolutely, was to appraise this in a way that would, that would bring back the highest possible sale price for the land regardless of our intention. And, you know, some people think that an appraisal is an appraisal, and that's just a number, and that's what it's worth, but the appraiser in every appraisal I've ever read, they're very careful to explain, to condition their valuation based on the intentions to develop. And so there's a key piece on page 43 that I think captures this. And what you'll see as you look at this is, the blue dots on this graph are all of the data points. The ones that are circled are the ones used to develop the evaluation. And what happened was the appraiser took every land sale that had gone to rent-by-the-bedroom student housing in downtown and used that valuation and applied it to this lot. That's only accurate if this council wants to put rent-by-the-bedroom student housing on it, and those valuations outpace the comparables of other types of development downtown by a factor of two and a half, by a factor of two and a half. So any, any statistician who looked at that analysis would say those are outliers, you need to get rid of them, they're not relevant to the study. And if we do that, what we see is that the offer price that's come in is actually much higher than the average of all the other comparables. And that's before we enter negotiations. That's just the initial offer we have. In regards to the incremental approach, there are a couple of reasons to do this. One, it increases the value of the rest of the site if we are to develop the remaining two acres. There's a tendency in government to do things in one transaction because it minimizes your transaction costs. It's the easiest way politically to get something done. But in terms of absolute value capture from the sale, it's much better to do something that will appreciate the value of the remainder of the site. And developing a small portion of the property with something that is of very high quality will do exactly that. Number two, it preserves two acres of open space, gives us time to consider it, so there's no threat whatsoever to the ability to run festivals or other programming. And finally, and this is the most important part, is it tests a new development concept, and it tests it in a parking neutral way, and it allows us to say after this is done, you know what, that was enough, or maybe we'd want more, but we still have that option to decide, so we don't have to program the entire lot in one go. Now, in terms of why we might do this now, you know, if we didn't do it now, let's say we just decide that we are going to wait to do anything at all until we have the full results of the entire parking study and transportation master plan in hand, all of it. Well, in terms of lost time, it's going to be 12 months till we have that in hand. Then it's going to be another six months roundabout until an RFP process is concluded. We're at 18 months now. Then, once we select something, it's going to be at least another 12 months until they can get through schematic design and design details and construction documents and building permits. And there's probably a fudge factor in there that I'm just going to assume everything works out perfectly and not really counts. So we're at 30 months before something would be in the ground, before we'd be adding anything to the tax base, before the school district would be getting $80,000 a year. And so there's a real opportunity cost to not doing something sooner. If we do this very modest proposal sooner, we capture all that now. I think it's just very simple, it's the bird in the hand principle. You know, we were told at one of our meetings by a commercial broker that we should hold off because the land's always going to appreciate in value, and it's going to be more valuable five years down the line. And that's true, but unless the land appreciates faster than it, than our costs of doing things is increasing across the city, then we aren't really gaining anything. It's a wash. So, to be clear, this is about opening up the thing, the procedure for these small parcels. This isn't about just signing off on what we've seen tonight. And it's about adding $80,000 in tax revenue annually to the school district. It's about repaying the costs of the parking study more than three times over. It's about being able to make some of these public improvements to the district that may make existing assets useful. And I think anywhere else in any other sector, we would call doing those things good business. And what I am fearful of is that a politics of allegiance that has preceded the facts being presented is going to argue to us that we should be paralyzed with further analysis. And like I said, that's okay if we make that decision as a council, but we should make that decision as a council in full light of the facts and with full community input. I think it's good business. And I think we're going to be told tonight, it's going to be presented to us as though there's a unified front in, in opposition, but I don't think that's true based on the phone calls I've had, based on the recessions I've had to the media coverage, which only started yesterday. And so I'd urge the council just to proceed with caution. I don't want to vote on this tonight. I don't want to vote on it until we have those parking results in hand. But after that, you know, maybe at July, the July 5 meeting, or maybe at the meeting the third week of July, maybe it's time to make a decision and vote, vote it up or down whether or not we're going to consider something smaller on the southern end of the lot. So with that, you know, I'm anxious to hear what the thoughts of the council are. I know Rob will answer any questions. I'll answer any questions to the best I can. I know we've got a lot of members of the public that are passionate and have opinions about this, and I think we should be anxious to hear them.
What questions do we have in the council? Okay. Well, let's open it up for public comment. Now, everybody gets one turn. Now, everybody gets one turn at the microphone. Keep your remarks addressed to me. Don't engage council member or anybody in the public, okay? You get one turn to the microphone unless the council member brings you up to ask you questions. Fair enough? Okay, good, yes.
Mayor Jordan, thank you for having us tonight. I'm Sarah Sparks Stebold. I'm an investor both locally and statewide. I also consult businesses for growth and merger and acquisition potential. And I'm a resident of Fayetteville at 1662 East Amber Drive. I have a couple of questions to address to you, Mayor, before I make my comments, just for clarification purposes. The actual dates that the physical parking study was conducted, do we know those dates?
Peter?
Yes, we do.
We did.
I would like the dates, please.
The physical counts were done on April 28th and April 30th. April 28th and April 30th, Thursday and Saturday.
So there were, there were no physical parking, no onlook prior to that? Those were the only two dates that they visually?
Those are the only two dates.
Perfect, thank you. And my second question is, in regards to the appraisal, and I read through the appraisal and did not see this, hence the term for the question, is was there analysis made to different values per space? I.e., are the spaces on the Dixon Street frontage valued at a higher price per square foot than those, say, in the back corner or on the West Street lot where the, was the appraisal? I couldn't tell that the appraisal was broken out that way, so.
I couldn't either. Was it?
No, it wasn't broken out that way. The appraiser looked at the land as though it was raw land and that it was developable, developable for any uses allowed in the zoning code. I suspect that there's actually a gradient of value from one side to the other, but the appraisal didn't get to that. My contention would be that the spaces closest to Dixon are probably the most valuable.
And my third question prior to my comments, was there any consideration on financial analysis in reference to the city's financial well-being about the lost tax revenue from area businesses? There was a lot of commentary about gained tax revenue from property taxes and such, but the potential of lost revenue from businesses relocating due to lack of parking or lost business revenue?
I do not know, I don't know the answer to that question.
I don't believe so.
I would not think so, but we can look into it, Sarah.
And to your comment on the parking, all we've done on the parking is calculate a per-space revenue generated for the full year divided by the number of spaces. $400 per space, an event parking, $900 per space. On the meter revenue, for a total of $1,300 per space for that lot.
Thank you.
And the numbers, a lot of this stuff will come a little clearer. We're supposed to get some preliminary numbers by the end of the month, isn't that right, Chris? We were talking about some of this stuff today, and I, I don't have an answer because we haven't.